Appreciate it, thank you. Item five.
Consent agenda items, items A through I.
Would approve.
Second.
Motion approved and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six.
Consideration in action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Mr. Oscar Garcia Junior to fill the spot for Mr. Robert Elguera.
Second.
Your motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, if I just will make a comment, if you'd allow me to make a comment, I'd like to thank Mr. Guera for his years of service to the P U B board and to the city of Brownsville. I really do appreciate his leadership and all the work that he has put in over the past couple of years to serve P U B and ultimately the city of Brownsville.
Well noted. Item seven, there's no public comments, is that right?
No public comments.
The first, who is the first time?
Item eight.
No, there's a request to move item nine, if I can have a motion to move item nine before item eight.
Some of.
A motion, but Commissioner Camarillo can have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Samora, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Read item nine, please.
Item nine, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand ten dash zero thirty-nine to approve the execution of a project reimbursement agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation relating to financing improvements at the Brownsville Sports Park.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, this resolution authorizes for us to issue some certificates of obligation approximately three million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the sports parks with the understanding that the B C I C will pay the entire debt service, which includes principal interest when the C O is issued. And the capital projects for this particular C O would be bleachers, about nine hundred and sixteen thousand. You have buildings, all related to the sports park and big sports cop buildings. Approximately, right now, we have a number of about three million one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But in the immediate future, we'll be asking you to issue a certificate of obligation that includes this particular amount for the sports park. The B C I C board has already approved the reimbursement resolution. So, all we're asking for you tonight is to approve this particular resolution.
Okay, this is an action item?
I approve.
Motion approved, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight, please.
Item eight, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand ten dash zero thirty-two expressing official intent to reimburse costs incurred to make improvements to the city of Brownsville Sports Park.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, obviously it takes a while before the certificates of obligation are issued. But we want to start some of these projects ahead before the C O is issued. So, this authorizes us that as soon as the proceeds of the C O are received, we can go ahead and reimburse the general fund. And that's all this is. So, again, we ask that you approve this resolution.
Would approve?
We have a motion approved, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item ten.
Consideration in action regarding Long and Shilton's auditing professional services contract on two additional fiscal years ending fiscal years two thousand ten and two thousand eleven.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, when we went out for proposals three years ago, the, one of the items included that the contract may be extended for an additional two years at the option of the city. We're asking the city to go ahead and extend the contract to Long Shilton for the next two years. We have, I have talked to some of the audit committee members. They all were positive, indicating that they would recommend that we extend the contract for two more years.
This is an action item?
Would approve?
Motion approved, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eleven.
Consideration in action to approve amendment number two to advance funding agreement between the state of Texas acting through the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Brownsville for the East Morrison Road project.
Members, honorable mayor, members of the city commission, this is our portion and they're asking for an advanced payment. And this is for the East Morrison Road. The packet that you have indicates an amount of one million six fifty-six nine twenty ninety-three. That number has been revised downward by about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The new number that we need to, the amount that we need to advance the state is one million five twenty-seven seven fifty-two thirty-nine.
Would approve, your motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve.
Consideration in action to authorize Mayor Patricio Madas Junior to apply for the two thousand ten Edward Brine Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program and respectively set an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Brownsville, Texas and Cameron County for application number two thousand ten H five 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 two dash T X dash D J in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Mayor, members of the city commission, good evening. Seeking authorization for the mayor to accept this interlocal corporate agreement between the county, Cameron, City of Brownsville for this grant that was awarded to the city of Brownsville in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. This is a disparate allocation in which both cities are, I mean, the city and the county have to agree to the amounts that we will receive, not to exceed the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. The initial amounts that were, that were formula based, that were awarded was eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirteen for the city of Brownsville and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-nine for the county of Cameron. Between myself and Mr. Pizza Fuera, we came to an agreement that the allocation would be forty thousand for Cameron County and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two for the city of Brownsville.
Would approve?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And at a future date, we'll come back and for the city commission for a public hearing, advising the commission how we wish to spend the money. For the most part, it will be valid policy of the money.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could, I have a motion to move item seventeen up. There's no sense of holding the gentleman here, I'm sure he's got buildings to build.
Some of.
So, there are motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving up item seventeen, please read it.
Consideration in action to award a contract for consulting services to represent the city of Brownsville in Washington, DC.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. For this particular item, let me just read what I have in here. It is intent of the city of, city of Brownsville to contract with a consulting firm to provide consulting representation services for the city of Brownsville before the U.S. Congress and national agencies. The consulting firm shall prepare letters and testimonies, make appointments, monitor legislative and executive activities, and communicate effectively with the city of Brownsville and its delegation and their staff, as well as groups who share specific interests with the city of Brownsville. In addition, consulting firms should assist in identifying grants and assisting the preparation of such materials.
Okay.
The recommendation is to award a contract for consulting services to represent the city of Brownsville in Washington, DC to Dallas Logistics Incorporated of West Loco, Texas for a monthly fixed retainer of seven thousand, which includes direct expenses based on an hourly rate for forty hours per month. This contract shall commence upon award by city commission for representation through the end of fiscal year two thousand eleven, which ends on September thirtieth, two thousand eleven, legislative sessions and special sessions required to conduct the regular annual businesses of the Congress and national agencies. The city reserves a unilateral option to extend the life of the contract for two periods of one year each thereafter, if mutually acceptable to the firm and the city of Brownsville for the same fixed amount. Following the, sorry. Now, also in this agreement, the city and the contractor and the firm might terminate this agreement with or without cause within thirty days prior to written notice. Now, following the implementation, should the city manager find that the firm has failed if any material respect to perform its agreed upon obligation under this agreement, the agreement shall be canceled by the city as being in the best interest of the city of Brownsville. Funding for these services will be derived from the general fund.
Okay, city attorney, you okay with this?
Yes, I approve it.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
You have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Back to item thirteen.
Item thirteen, presentation and discussion of a report by Ecological Services and Disposition Incorporated.
Good evening, city, mayor and commissioners. Well, we came to give you a little bit of update on the recycling center, how far we've been improving the center. On the beginning, when we take the control.
I think it would be a good idea, city manager, to remove that from there and put that on the, on the table. That way, people can see it, or the camera can see it, so the citizens that are watching at home know it can be recycled.
Yeah, that is very important to say thank you to the, to the public, to the community, that now the city, the whole community is catching on recycling. When we, on the beginning, when we start to operate the recycling center, the center was kind of empty. It was one baler to bail cardboard, and it was outside doors. You can see, you can see how the recycling center used to look like. That was the recycling center for the city of Brownsville. Not even one month, two months later, we improve and we invest. Right now, we operating the center with probably about six balers, inside balers. And we are baling newspaper, plastic bottles, plastic containers. But we, not only that, we are grinding also, and we are making pellets. Those bottles, those bottles, instead going to the landfill, we are making pellets. And if those goes to the landfill, it will stay there between five hundred to a million years on the landfill. We're reducing a lot of pollution, a lot of contamination into the, into pellets. Those, those yellow, it was bags from H E B, from Walmart. Those are grocery, uh, plastic bags. Those blue, blue pellets that you have on your hands, those are from plastic detergent bottles. The orange ones, they are from, uh, plastic, plastic juice jocks.
What's this from?
Oh, those are from packaging. You can see that packaging on the corner, eighty percent of the landfill, it, it's packaging. Most of our products that we buy, we buy a television, but believe me, seventy percent is packaging. The cardboard, the plastic wrap. We, we install a densifier and we are making pellet from all the packaging. And the Rio Grande, nobody has a densifier and also a compactor. We jump another step. We jump, instead grinding, now we are pelletizing. We are making raw material from our garbage.
You can't do it like that.
Also, I like what you mentioned, a second chance for our employees. E S D has been hiring lately. I can say that fifty, fifty percent of our employees come from Heaveway House and also from restitution centers. People, we are giving the second chance. We giving them, them opportunity. We are training them in, uh, machine operators, forklift operators, shipping and receiving supervisors. And it's a matter of fact, couple of drivers, we've been helping for them to get back their license. So, we are hiding also, uh, citizens, and we giving them the second chance. Not only that, those are employees from E S D sorting the materials at the recycling center. Those are the materials that I mentioned to you, and you can see, I've been through schools, from kinders to the high school, and also we receiving tours at the facility. The list of the recyclables has been increasing tremendously. With those machines that we get, right now, the centers, it's recycling batteries, oils, filters, small appliances, that they used to be on the road. E S D is making cleanups for the city of Brownsville. Those are the list. Also, we opened additional drop-off locations. We jumped to, I believe, nine drop-off locations so far, in the schools, in church, community, hospitals. Those are the addresses and on the phones, and also the, the schedule. Now, that is how the recycling center looks. For, for me as an environmental person, we are very, very proud of the citizens of Brownsville, how beautiful it's been, they respond. We also support the city official, Mr. Camarillo. We've been through many, many programs together, and thank you for give us your support. And that is, well, promoting the cleaner, to have a cleaner Brownsville. We've been making cleanups in couple of areas of the communities. We have tours at the, at the city center, at the recycling center also. We have, once a month, we are working with environmental clubs, with girls and boys clubs. We have all the schools, these years, we, we've been training between five thousand little students this year, five thousand, from pre-K to, to the university. Everybody receive gifts made of recycled product. Those are the containers that we have in the church. We have a four-sectional container, six-section, eight-section. It's based like a Saint Joseph Church. They request a bigger container, and they have like a two or three containers, and we pull those up twice a week. Also, we are helping the Valley Regional, the hospitals, the landfills. Also, we working very, very hard with the winter Texans. We also support our festivities. In the, in the beginning, when we start to do the grinding, okay, it was kind of a dream for us to, for us, to E S D, to save the city of Brownsville seventy-five thousand dollars yearly. So far, in the, in these two years, I've been saving to the city of Brownsville hundred and forty thousand dollars in those, in these two years. And also, we jumped to thirty employees. And we are, we are very happy with the support from our commissioners. Thank you, and if you have questions?
Hi, thank you for coming and making the presentation. I placed this on the agenda because there are individuals out there who don't know that there are more than one drop-off locations in the city. So, I think it's very important for the community and our residents to know that we have at least a dozen drop-off locations, and you do take all sorts of products, recyclable products. And I also wanted to know where all these recyclable products were going, and if we were, or if you were producing any income off of it or revenue. I didn't know if that was something that the city or our staff could explore when it comes to our contract. I'm being quite frank here with all due respect, considering our economic times right now and the condition of our departments when it comes to, to funding for some of our projects. I just wanted to see where our product was going and what type of products are being made off of it, and if your business is growing because it's been so profitable.
Well, businesses is growing, yes. After, after the collision of the economy, it was hard to keep the recycling center open. It's a matter of fact, with overtime on Saturdays. And it was hard because E S D cover all the expenses on the, also the labor cost. And what my contract said, it's that the city of Brownsville will provide just the center, okay? And E S D cover insurance, labor cost, overtime, plus also. The subcontractor that you used to have, they used, they used to charge the city of Brownsville a little bit more than six thousand five hundred per month. I don't have any charge for the city of Brownsville. I do this because this is my profession, this is my passion. And, and we are, Marta, myself, I'm covering all those expenses. So, my contract said that my, let's say my revenue, it will be based on my job. Whatever I pick it up, whatever I process, no matter, each baler that you see at the center, it costs between five to seven thousand dollars. I have five balers there. So, honestly, at this time, we don't have to pay the city of Brownsville. Because let me tell you, in every single city on this state where they have the curbside, the public pay, every household pay for the service. They charge between fourteen to twenty-one dollars, and I don't charge to anyone. That is the reason why we are living, or we are surviving with, with those sales or with those revenues.
What is your business profit a year?
I'm sorry?
What is your business profit a year? I think, I think that's inappropriate. This is a.
Yes, because, yes, number one.
Why is that inappropriate? Because this is, this is America. She's a business person.
I'm a private business, number one, I don't work for the city of Brownsville.
She's providing the service to the city under contract.
She's subsidized by the city and she's making money off of it.
No, 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 sir, no.
She gets a free building.
She's saving, she's saving the city money.
She's not making money.
She's entitled to make money.
I totally agree with that.
We don't want her not to make money, I think the question is.
We're not her partners.
No, but we're providing her a place to operate her business free of charge.
Can I ask you, how much do you make per year? No, because it's not my business.
I make ninety thousand a year.
No, no, it's not my business, and I don't want to know.
It's a big deal.
I'm, 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 I'm a, I'm a private business.
Well, how much do you make?
I don't have to answer that question, sir.
That's totally uncalled for.
Exactly, sir.
That's really totally uncalled for.
We're giving her a building.
It's very unprofessional of us to hear, I mean, if we're going to get into the private industry and ask people what they're making, that you're overreaching, and that's totally uncalled for.
Char Days and some Red Fest and all them, how much they're making?
That, that is working with the city. Those are entities that we provide service for.
We provide a service.
Yeah, I don't provide, I don't provide a service. I provide, this is a contract, this is a contract.
Exactly, it's a contract.
The mayor has asked all these other nonprofits to show us their books on how much they make.
There's no comparison.
From Red Fest, Char Days, but you don't want to do that.
Well, those are order entities.
Thank you.
There's no comparison.
Is your contract for a year, two years, five years? I'm not familiar with your contract.
Two years, and every year, we, we renew the contract.
So, when does it come up for renewal?
I believe next month.
Okay, and so, when, I, I think, I think as Commissioner Samora said, you do great work. That's wonderful. What are your hours of operation?
Eight hours daily, from eight to four-thirty.
But I thought that we were going to have twenty-four hour ability to drop off.
Well, yes, we set up the container outside of the fence. Mr. Camarillo suggests, Commissioner Camarillo suggests that. But then, the, the people, the community, after, after, no matter that the, the container is full, sometimes, they set the trash, they, the, the health department say that is trash, they put it on the sides of the fence. They don't even throw it in, inside of the fence, okay? So, we are, with Mr. Camarillo, with his authorization, he suggest for us to put a tarp and not to have the twenty-four seven. Is that right, Mr. Camarillo?
Yes, I did. And I guess, let me, let me explain, explain a little bit about the twenty-four seven. The idea was that, you know, I felt, and we talked about this with our key Brownsville Beautiful Group, that, and help the communities, that the city should have a place where, where the public can go at any time, after hours, to go take the recyclables. I had heard many people, you know what, I get out of five, by the time I go out there, it's closed, or you know what, the containers are, you know, certain, they're only there certain days. So, it only made sense to, to, to try to, again, come up with twenty-four seven recycling center, twenty-four seven drop-off box. But with that, the other issue was, could, could that one site maintain the, the volume that it's, that it's currently seen? And, and it cannot. And I think it's for, for a number of reasons. And I know we've, we've talked about those, you know, that container would have to be cleared out literally every day.
No, we clear every day, but let's say on Sundays. On Sundays, where, where everybody has the chance to go and drop the recyclables, nobody is there on Sunday.
Right.
Yes, right, every Monday, it's full, every Monday morning, we clear it out.
But the other thing is that we don't have, we don't have no more than, again, one, two, three, four, five, five actual drop-off boxes versus if we, I, the way I see it, we need at least fifteen, maybe even twenty, because now everybody's coming downtown. And so, now everybody, well, now there's twenty-four seven, so then let's all go.
Yes, it looks, it looks fine.
I know, exactly, so we can't keep up with that demand. So, until we get it right, I thought, you know what, this is going to cause more litter issues. The trash is, you know, things are going to go all out of place. So, decided, I thought the recommendation would be to, to let's close it, and let's kind of reevaluate the process and the system, so we can hopefully become a little bit more efficient and look at the additional sites that are much needed around Brownsville, so we can offset some of that, you know, again, some of that, you know, the, 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 the number of folks that are coming downtown, because they are coming. I mean, there's no doubt, every day, the traffic that, and I've been there and seen it, the number of traffic that comes there, I mean, it's huge. But we need more containers, I think, and kind of need to look at how, how we do this. So, therefore, that's what we decided to do.
Let me tell you something, Mr. Camarillo.
Wait a second, I think that Gavin wants to, Commissioner Gavin wants to.
Just in follow-up, the, the locations of the drop-off, you can clearly see that they're stuffed all the time. And it's a concern of mine that it looks horrible, no matter which drop-off station you're talking about. And I think that you have to build into your interior day picking up more frequently, because I live a block from Saint Joe Academy, for example. Four out of five times that I send my kids to dump the cardboard or the plastic, they can't. They come home with it in their hand or the truck, because they're full. My kids have gone to the center, your center, several times, and it's been closed, and it wasn't on Sunday. And your pictures, the, the nice picture that you had was very clean, but nine times out of ten, when I drive by, it doesn't look like that. It looks like a trash, a trash dump, and it's very, seems very unkept. And my concern is, as you're driving into downtown, is that really what we want to see? When we drive into downtown, do we want to see this trash dump right there? Again, I think, I fully support recycling, I think it's wonderful, but I don't think we're getting enough service by the locations that you have. As Commissioner Camarillo said, I think we need either more frequent pickup or more drop-off locations.
Well, yes, Commissioner, but in the past, for the last eighteen years, we used to have only the recycling center on Elizabeth. We have the one in Old Minto.
That doesn't really answer my question.
Those, no, yes, let me tell you, because we have at least a little bit, a little bit more activity. Yes, we can improve, absolutely. But, about, not even about, a year ago, I give those pages, those pages to, to the city, for them, those flyers, to be in television in Channel Twelve. Once a month, I call them, when you are going to publicize, when, when you're going to put in TV that we have these locations, that this is the material that we can dump, that you can recycle. And I mean, so far, if you look on Channel Twelve, we haven't seen those advertisements. So, nobody knows, yes, nobody knows, but if you need from, from help from us, we need your support also.
But what you're saying is, is that no one knows where to take it, I think.
No, no, yes, but.
And yet, you're saying also that you don't have the either manpower or time to deal with.
No, we do have manpower, but I go by my contract, it's not my decision. The city of Brownsville write down a contract for me. I don't write down my own contract. They told me that I need to be open from eight to four-thirty. I was working from seven-thirty to five. They told me on Saturdays from eight to twelve-thirty. I was working all this time from eight to three-thirty.
Marta, Commissioner Tryon has a question. Marta, Commissioner Charlie has a question.
Actually, it's more of a comment. We use the Episcopal Day School Center, and they have-
Robert.
And they've actually put a wall around it, because it, it fills up incredibly fast. And if it's full, we go down to Saint Joseph. And it's something that we've gotten our kids into doing, and we've been doing that. Your staff is very polite at the Elizabeth Street, they've always been very courteous every time they go. There are some concerns about its act capacity at this point. And if your contract is up for renewal, and you are an entity that does business with this city, and you are using our location and our facilities at no charge, then yes, we want to see your books before we renew your contract. That will be something that we will want to see, we'll want to see what your profit margins are, and we'll want to know how you're going to expand your business to provide more service. Because we understand that we have improved service, and we understand that that's a good thing, but we want to continue to move forward and to provide more services, because we owe that to our community. And we also owe it to our community to be able to tell them and to be accountable as to what amount of money you're generating at a facility that is supported by their tax dollars. So, that's something that you will need to provide. And I believe that I'm not the only commissioner who believes in what I'm telling you right now at this point.
Okay.
That's all I'm going to say. And one more thing, Ben, you did a presentation today on the revitalization of downtown Brownsville. How does having a recyclable, a recycel center, the heart of Elizabeth Street, where we have our parades and everything, fit this type of business and how it's, you know, growing at the rate it is? Is it not in our best interest to move this type of business out of our downtown area, where we have our parades and festivals, and, and is it in the best interest of our city to move this out of where it is right now?
Commissioner, well, before Ben, Ben, before you respond- No, let me, let me just, Commissioner, do you mind if I make a comment?
Wait a second, the, the city manager wants to respond.
Well, hold on, the commissioner's allowing me time to speak. If I can just make a comment, Charlie. I totally, I totally hear what you're saying. Let me say this, that we've all been to Austin. If you go to, you go downtown Austin, there's a recycling center off the frontage near downtown. It's actually in downtown. It's by there, the Police Department of Mount St., I forgot what street it was. And I took a photo the other day, when, when I was there last month, and it's trashy. And I thought to myself, why is this here? Why does the city of Austin have this recycling center in the heart, ba- basically in the heart of downtown, and why is it like that? And, I don't know, because I didn't ask anyone. But what I think the recycling center does for downtown, and, and the reason why we've held a number of cleanups, is to promote it, you know? I think it helps downtown, believe it or not. And although there's issues, and don't get me wrong, there are, the cleanliness and things like that, I think those are things that need to get worked out, that will get worked out regardless, eventually. But to move the center, again, two years ago, no one knew what that place was. Nobody knew what it was doing. Now, people know. Our volunteers that go clean up Brownsville know, because we have our cleanup sites there. I think it's, I think it's a good thing to have it in downtown, because again, I think it promotes the environment, again, recycling, and I think all that ties into revitalization and economic development, and that's important. So, again, I just want to point that out, I, I don't think it's a bad thing. The system and the process is what needs to get worked out.
City manager, you want to say something?
When we started the project with Ms. Martinez, several years ago, in, in my opinion, recycling was, is at its adolescent stage in Brownsville. Number two, when prior city managers tried to close down that location, we had, we had city hall full of people, we cannot close that location, that is not an option. We need to keep that location open, or we will have public outcry. The most public outcry I've, I've seen since I've been here has been when that location was closed for a short time, as decisions made by, by others.
It's convenient for a lot of people.
Yeah, it was, that place is in demand. Now, the contract calls for us to have the ability to audit our location. The location that she is leasing or, or using that belongs to the city of Brownsville. Not necess- she's expanding her business to other locations, and this is a sleeping giant that's about to, to come to fruition as far as recycling all these products. At the landfill, we, we do have, we have, we have a system of mulching and recycling, brush and things like that, which we do, we do very good job at. Now, when this hits school districts and things like this, this is a huge business that eventually is going to hit our city. It's, 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 people are already soliciting for this business, et cetera. Our contract with Ms. Martinez expires April. And, and she's already been informed that we have other people that are interested in this kind of business. Now, what occurs here is that all these products don't visit our landfill. So, we lose as far as the fees that we charge for the weight of this, of this kind of material, when it goes directly to her, her location. So, you know, we, we are going to look at, at the idea of having a location within our landfill where the product is weighed, and plus, whatever business receives all this, will receive a thousand times more product, because right now, we are, we are still receiving a lot of this, a lot of this kind of product out of landfill from, from trash that is picked up by our residential and commercial companies that are, that are in contract with the city. So, I, I think this is, this is, this is, this is a very good idea that we, that, that we initiated contractual agreement with, with Ms. Martinez to handle the issues at this certain location, but I do believe that eventually we need to expand on this. And she is correct when she said that when we had the contract with the, with the, with the waste company, we did have to pay a fee to them as per the contract, which we don't pay her. She is correct about that, Charlie. Now, auditing the books is our right within the contract, and we can audit the books as to the activity that occurs at the location on Elizabeth Street. And, and we will, and we are going to do, and we do, and we do do that. And that helps us with, with the type, the way the business is going and the way the business is growing. Obviously, she's expanded to other locations within the city, where she can pick up a lot of this material and recycle, which is, which is good for all of us. Obviously, we are, have been working on-
But we have no right to, to go and audit that over there.
We have the right to audit our location, our location. We don't, I don't know if we have the right to audit everything she does in the city, or what the rest of her business is.
We're overstepping our bounds.
But we do have the right to have a contractual, a contract that expires at a certain time, and see what we're going to do to enhance the, the ability for participation from other companies, and to see how the city is going to aid and assist in making this a bigger type of business.
The options are, Charlie, that the city can go back and take it over again. She's made a huge investment, obviously, and she's got a right to make money. Or put it out for bids, and maybe somebody else will provide better service, or expand the program more, or whatever, and compete with her. I mean, those are the options we have.
Yes, so we have to follow municipal guidelines, and we would, if we can extend contracts with her, then we'll, we'll get with legal and fight, and determine if we can do that. But obviously, we need to, we need to make this a, a bigger business in the city. And we need to utilize our landfill. We need to utilize our landfill for this as well. So, that, that's where we're going to get at.
Do you know if other cities have contracts with entities like, like this one, where they, they request, or they have a percentage of the, the revenue?
Well, number one, other cities would have to have a landfill, and there's not many cities in this part of the world that have landfills. You have to go to probably Corpus, and Corpus's landfill, and, and see that. The other, the other, the other companies that have landfills in, in our part of the world are, are private companies, Allied Ways, things like that, which is, is in Donna. And, and they really are not in the business of recycling, they're in the business of collecting trash and profiting from trash as per, as per the weight at their, at their scales. Well, I think we're, we're basically the ones that have taken the, the lead in, in identifying materials that can be recycled. For example, she brought up the fact that she's been recycling the plastic bags, as, and, and we know, we're, we've been working on an ordinance in relation to the plastic bag. So, this will be a big help for us in, in identifying locations for, for, for the bags to be taken to. And that's helped us with a lot of people bringing in the plastic bags to the recycling centers.
On a positive note, first of all, there was nobody willing to step up to the plate other than Marta when we first got started, the recycling, okay? And not many people knew about the, the location here downtown. There's more awareness than, that's come out of this. There's more sites than-
When we, when, when we started this, we approached her in relation-
We only have one site, now we have seven sites. So, it's expanded.
The sites that she has is something that she's done, she, she might have had some of these sites already before she started working with us. But yes, she, she does have other sites.
And other, the other positive thing is now, we're recycling a lot more materials or products than before, than before when the city was doing.
She is. I believe, for example, Wal- for example, for example, Walmart has gotten into a contractual agreement with a, with a company to take some of their product to the landfill. So, it goes to the landfill, get, and gets weighed, and then they take it to their location.
I just don't want to go back to where we were, to where the city ends up with it and is, and is very limited. That's what I, you know, we need to encourage-
Well, no, we're, we're, we're going to work with her on expanding this.
We need to encourage that.
The limit is what she does now. The fact of the matter is, we have a lot of the products still going to the landfill. And if we can recycle and save space at the landfill, it's, it's, it's best for us as well.
I don't think anyone is discouraging what she does. In fact, I think we've all commended what she does. She's providing a service that, for a long time, we didn't have here. But I think we all recognize it, that it's a, a service that's growing. It's a need that, that people are, are looking at right now more and more, in light of everything that's going on with recycling and, and the environment and growing green.
But Commissioner-
I just, I'm, can I finish, please? I didn't interrupt. But I wanted to be sure that if we're growing and we're about to see curbside, curbside recycling, if we have, or if we're working with an entity that can provide the service for something that's going to be much grander, much bigger than we all anticipated. So, I think it's, it's fair question to ask about revenue, about what she's providing, because competition, it's, it's, it, there's nothing wrong with competition.
I don't know.
There could be another company, or, or she could be ve- very well a company to, to grow, to provide a service that could become potentially profitable to us, or to provide additional services in the city. And that's, that's why I placed it on the agenda. I didn't mean to bring you here, I hope you weren't insulted, just wanted to have a healthy discussion on it.
My question is, my question is this, what right do we have to get into her business as she's expanded? That's her business. Now, now, what she does over here at the, at the recycling center downtown, that's under management. It's been done, it's been doing, it, it, it is monitored. But to get into her private business, we have no, no business doing that. I think we're overreaching.
Can I get a float for Char Days, too?
I, 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 I agree with that, and I also agree with us not even touching some Redo Fest and everybody else either. But one of the, one of the, one of the things that the Commissioner Samora touched on is, and, and as, as you recall, Commissioner, one of the things that you suggested in relation to residential garbage was, was that we have a separate pickup of, of, of recycling, which, which, which is going to be done. And eventually, we'll get into that, where our residential garbage company will pick up the, 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 the recycling, and take it to the landfill, then we can work out something with Ms. Martinez to come pick it up, or get it to her. So, for now, anyway, until we get into, into, so this, this is evolving into something that's going to, that's going to get a lot bigger than, 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 than we have been working with. This is going to be a huge business. And yes, we have to give her credit for bringing it up to us years ago, and establishing the fact that we needed something done at the, at the certain location, because, like I say, when we, when someone suggested that we closed, it created public outcry, and, and we had to reopen it pretty quick. And, and she was the one that offered the, the idea to us, and it's been working pretty well, other than the fact that we have had some issues with the location being overwhelmed with activity. However, we are monitoring that. If you go by there right now, it's perfectly clean. We've been working with her to assure that that ma- that maintains and stays that way. So, I, I believe our relationship with her has been well. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions?
I have a, a- My business is not only the recycling center. I've been in this business for more than twenty-four years. My background as an environmental engineer, we do consultants, we also work with the Maquiladoras, not only, not only in Matamoros, it's worldwide. My business is not coming from the city of Brownsville, honestly. My revenues, no. I'm not, I'm not making my money with recyclable from the city. I used, my business, I've been own this business for more than eighteen years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, fourteen?
No. We'll just put eight, no. We were just not present, there was three.
Hello, Allison.
Presentation and discussion regarding a potential policy related to awarding proclamations and/or certificates by city commission.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This item is regarding the, whether or not the city of Brownsville might adopt pro- pro- a proclamations policy. Some cities in Texas have such policies, Brownsville currently does not. So, what I did is I did a little, a little research, and I looked into what some other cities in Texas do. For example, in San Antonio, they have a policy that they offer proclamations for observance of specific days or months, such as Cancer Awareness Month, or Crime Prevention Week, things like that. They also recognize nonprofit organizations and certain milestones. San Antonio is a little unique in that they don't offer proclamations for individuals. Houston's a little more broad. They offer proclamations for a lot of events they consider significant, as well as civic celebrations, and they do recognize individuals, as well as organizations. Houston also offers letters of appreciation and certificates of recognition as alternatives to those items that don't meet the criteria for proclamations. Dallas, kind of similar. They offer them for people or organizations, for accomplishments or contributions to the, to the city itself. Also, they have the alternative of letters of appreciation or certificates. Similar with Fort Worth, they kind of, you know, line out what they don't do as opposed to what they do. No proclamations for business openings, birthdays, anniversaries. And they also have the alternative for certificates and letters of appreciation. And then finally, Cedar Park and Tyler, you know, individuals, organizations, special events or days that are nor- are noteworthy or historically significant, and none for commercial purposes, birthdays, anniversaries and the like. So, you know, it's just kind of a snapshot, but basically, the common thread is that proclamations among these cities are offered for items of high significance. The options for individuals vary. In San Antonio, there are none. And each city seems to offer other options, like letters and certificates of appreciation for those items, not meeting the criteria for proclamations. You know, other than First Amendment, there really aren't too many legal issues to touch on. I think it's more of a policy decision for the governing body to make.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions?
Allison, is there any sense in those cities that you looked at, how do, that you, when you say not meet the criteria for proclamations, do they, do they publish their criteria?
Yeah, each city has a website that has basically a form you fill out, indicating if you want a proclamation or a letter or, or whatnot. You fill out what you want it for, and then either the mayor or the commission determines whether or not it meets the criteria. In fact, I think it's San Antonio's is actually codified.
And do they limit the number of proclamations that are given at any one? Do they all give them at the commission meetings, and do they limit the number per meeting if they do?
I didn't see a single city that limited the number. I looked for that.
Houston does that on a separate date.
Houston does it on a separate day. My concern, thank you so much, especially to Commissioners Amora for asking for the information. It just seems that when there are times like last time, when there are a dozen different proclamations to give in one meeting, it kind of takes the specialness of the proclamation away in some, in some ways, and becomes tedious for the people listening at home.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I know that our city secretary Stella has also come up or drafted a form to apply for proclamations. Hopefully she'll, she sent it to all the other commissioners and something for us to look at in the future. And I was also concerned with the number of proclamations being given at the meetings because they did take up a lot of time. Not that they weren't all deserving. We can maybe possibly come up with a certificate like some of these other cities do, or we can provide them in a subsequent meeting or at an event. And another one of my concerns that was actually brought to my attention by city staff is, should we give proclamations to city staff who are doing their job? I mean, I love our city staff. They go above and beyond, but to give a proclamation, that was something that was also brought to my attention. So thank you very much for showing us what the policies are for some of the other cities.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Next item? Item 15.
Item 15, presentation and discussion regarding ordinance enforcement efforts in the city of Brownsville.
All right, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, just quickly, we've got a, what could be a lengthy presentation for you tonight, and so I'm going to try to breeze through this here fairly quickly.
Please do.
Twenty-two departments in the city of Brownsville. There are six departments that we're going to present to you.
Maybe that came by yourself, you know.
It'd be amazing for me to go break this down. Six departments that we're going to hear from today that do what we call ordinance enforcement in the city of Brownsville. Bear in mind, there are technical differences between code enforcement, law enforcement, ordinance enforcement in many different ways. There are many departments that are performing these tasks within the city. We do not have one code enforcement department. As you'll see here, there's a list of six of them that you're going to hear from in just a short while. Health, building inspections, fire planning, public works, and the heritage department downtown. A couple of other departments that you'll note are missing from there. The police department that you're well familiar with in terms of law enforcement, dealing with traffic ordinances, noise ordinance, which by the way is an ordinance that we're working on revising right now and will hopefully be coming to you soon. Also taxis and limousine licensing, and then the traffic department that enforces traffic and parking in downtown areas of Brownsville. One of the things that I want to point out as we get ready to do this is please note that many of these departments, in fact, all of these departments do multiple tasks aside from just ordinance enforcement. Obviously, the police department's a good example of that. They spend a lot of their time focusing on the criminal statutes. And in terms of, say, animal rules or different things like that, you've got the health department that can deal with that. You typically won't see a police officer going in and checking the health code in a restaurant. There are other folks in the city that specialize in those areas from different departments. The heritage department, another example. They have authority to do limited enforcement of heritage codes within the overlay district as you'll hear, but they also run the Brownsville Film Commission. So there are a lot of hats being worn by different departments. And as you're going to see in the presentations that are to come, a lot of these departments have wide ranges of the actual enforcement they do, in large part because of the fact that they have so many other additional duties that they're doing at the same time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you headed anywhere with this? In other words, are you proposing future ordinances or future ordinances?
Not yet.
Okay, let me tell you.
I just wanted to educate myself and the public because I do get frequent questions, who do I call for this particular code enforcement issue?
And, 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 I don't want to be a jerk, and really I don't, and I don't mean to come off this way, but this is what we, this is what we're here to learn. This is what we do in our own time when we go into our director's offices and we learn from them and in the decisions that we make. You know, I mean, I'm tired. I'm sure you're tired too. And, I mean, this is, you know, this is what, as elected officials, this is what we're supposed to do and go to our department heads and learn. You know, I'm just, I just don't agree with taking up time at a city commission meeting. I mean, if it's leading somewhere, by all means, you know, let's go through this exercise. But in essence, this is something out of, you know, within the scope of our duties and within our job, you know, that we have to learn basically on our own, which we've all done.
Well, I'm extending the courtesy of the Commissioner, whatever she wants. I mean, is she, she wants to learn from this? She wants the public to learn from it? She wants to proceed?
That's, that's not my intention of placing this on the agenda. I go above and beyond.
Commissioner, do you want to proceed with this?
Yes, I do. I think it's important for the public to know what we, what we're doing and what departments are working on.
It is on the agenda. Please proceed unless somebody wants to make a motion to.
All right, with that, we've got about three slides for each department. We're going to start with Art Rodriguez from the Brownsville Health Department.
Jeff, before you do go, I guess I want to, because I know you oversee each of the departments are going to come up and speak. One of the things that should be noted that they all were, you know, they all have, each department does a multiple different things and the fire marshal wouldn't go do something for animal control and vice versa. But a lot of these folks are on the road. And sometimes I wonder why it is that it takes a complaint from the citizen to call one of us of an issue that could have been seen by anybody who's on the road. Public works, engineers or whomever, you know, if they're, if I'm out to go into a call to inspect a home, yet I see graffiti or I see, you know, trash and debris, why am I not connecting with code or health? And I don't, and I really don't see that happening, you know, why isn't it? You know, especially all the people that we have that are on the road constantly. But my job is this and I'm doing my job. We can't do that. And I, you know, and I know the health department and code is always pressed and they're always, we always tack on more and more and more with the limited amount of staff, but this should go for every department. Folks that are on the road, if they see something that doesn't look right, or that lights out at night, guess what? Jotted down, email, boom, send it, please work on this. Or you know what? Wheatie lot, code, work on this. And I'm a building inspector, yet I saw something that doesn't look right? I should do that. Every employee should. If they're out in, if they're in a vehicle, city vehicle, and they go do whatever they're supposed to, they should all help each other. They can't go to the call, I understand that, but if they see something that doesn't look right, somebody should call it in or email it and say, we should take care of that situation.
Well, if I could, I agree with you. Now, one of the things, I'm going to, two different ways I want to answer your question or your comment. Number one is, we do encourage city staff and you're going to hear, in fact, one of the things that's not on the presentation, because I tried to keep it short, is I asked each of these departments, list for me all the other departments that you work with on a regular basis in terms of these complaints. It was too much information to put in the presentation. A lot of these departments listed, you know, 10, 12 different city departments on top of outside agencies that they routinely work with, not just in terms of resolving the issues that they find, but in terms of getting input from other agencies and other departments in reference to where the problem sites are. So that is happening. The other thing that you're going to see though, when you look at the presentation, you're going to notice that the numbers of officers may be a little bit lower than what you may expect. A lot of these folks that are doing ordinance enforcement are very highly trained and there are specific things that they're looking for that to you or me may not seem that out of place. But to a trained ordinance enforcement officer, for instance, who drives by a wheaty lot and sees that the grass is X height, that's a problem where other employees or other people in the community might just drive right past it. And so as a result, you're going to see that a lot of these folks are highly trained. They know and they communicate regularly between themselves, but to train other employees within the city on some of those technicalities would be a little bit difficult for us. We try to give them as much support as we can, and again, I think the numbers will kind of speak for themselves. We wish we had more folks to go out there and do what we do, but.
I agree, and we need it. And I'll say, you know, I know code enforcement works with PD and fire, the fire marshal office. I mean, I've been with them numerous times where we've gone either, you know, dilapidated homes, you know, where they're kicking indoors and looking for, you know, things that have caused trouble or, you know, whatever it is, and they do work hand in hand and I really do appreciate it because it says a lot about the department, but obviously it's not just code, it's fire, it's PD, it's, and they all help each other, so that's a great thing.
And it even includes the legal department. You know, we've got John Chozy who is now working specifically with a lot of these particular departments you're going to hear from in trying to develop the prosecution side of what we're seeing so that we can get better response from the public in terms of complying with the ordinances. I agree. With that.
You want to continue, please?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. My goals are at the end of today that I will have added seven more ordinance compliance The public health department is primarily enforcing many of the ordinances that, and I'll give a description of some of the different ones that we focus on. Chapter 10, for example, includes all of our animal control, care control, dogs, cats, domestic pets, rabies control, impoundment, wild animals, commerce and live animals. Chapter 22, for example, businesses, is our Teflon Texas statutes, which includes all of our food and food service establishments. Chapter 54 is health and sanitation, which includes our mosquito control, rat control, unsightly and sanitary, and certain nuisance and offensive conditions. Chapter 46, also backing up to chapter 46, also our smoking in public places. I'm sorry, chapter 54. Going on to chapter 46, environmental, we deal with litter, junk and abandoned vehicles. Chapter 82, solid waste. Chapter 86, street sidewalks, certain other public places, for example, prohibited selling on the street, sidewalk, and the use of certain vacant lots for certain restricted uses. General authority of city relative to, are relative to city streets, and certain streets we are vending is not permitted due to traffic situations developing. Chapter 90, swimming pools, all public swimming pools areas are inspected by our code enforcement Basically, our, our department acts in the Brownsville city limits and some of the ETGA areas are extraterritorial jurisdiction areas. Just a summary of our different divisions, our animal control division with six inspectors, responded, transported, or interacted with the public and seven, over 7,000, nearly 7,000 requests for service. This can include bringing in pets, lost animals to the shelter, in some cases, working with the vets, working with the public sometimes if the pet does have a tag, to taking it to the household. Our foods division with five inspectors, we have about 1,900 license or permitings in Brownsville. So this is just a summary of our inspections for our last annual reporting period. Our code ordinance division with nine inspectors, we respond to over 5,812 requests for services. And many of these requests, they are usually not just ordinance enforcement. Some of these will result in some other department being contacted. And lastly, our vector control, which shows two inspectors for a total of 1,251 calls, can involve the vector control calls, the bees, many times the spraying for mosquitoes. I do want to add that although we show a total of 22 inspectors, we have, for example, five machines, vector control machines that we use, and we will move staff around to be able to rise to the location. This is our contact information. This is important because we do get many phone calls. We did not provide the stats for that here, but the public is welcome to contact us at those numbers. And also our website has some information available.
Do you put these out on channel 12?
Yes, we do, sir.
They come, they're every day? They roll three, four times?
I can't speak for every day. I would need to ask our channel 12 stuff. We don't play a role in programming for channel 12, but I know that the numbers are always available.
We also include the monthly, city, the monthly newspaper that residents get in their newspaper, at home. I mean, it's every single department's phone number.
We switch forward and they're direct.
We put them out in the newspaper also, so people can cut it out and put it on their refrigerator.
Thank you, Art.
Any questions? Thank you.
Item 16. You have three minutes. Item 16.
I always say presentation.
No, this presentation's not over.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city commission.
Okay. Can you limit it up to three minutes?
Also, we're located on City Plaza, second floor, and it's at 1034 East Levy Street, right across the hall from the health department. Chapter 8, primary ordinances enforced, the chapter 8, contractor registration, building codes. We work with the heritage sidewalks, we're moving demolition, building and structures, unsafe dilapidated building and structures, electrical code, mechanical code, which is the same thing as air condition, plumbing code, gas code, excavations, grading, energy conservation code, and a windstorm code. Chapter 22, the, which is just the New Orleans car title loan businesses. Chapter 58, housing code. Chapter 90, swimming pool code, which we inspect the bonding, plumbing on the swimming pool and the, gunite inspection. Chapter 308, plot plan management on a permits, building permits. Chapter 316, mobile homes and manufactured homes. Chapter 318, telecommunication towers. Chapter 332 subdivisions. Chapter 344 landscaping. Chapter 348 zoning. Geographic area responsibility, the Brownsville city limits and some ETJ. Enforcement activity, we have 10 inspectors, film inspectors, and we get around almost 1,200 inspections per year. 10 inspectors specialize in building codes, four inspectors specialize in electrical And three inspectors specialize on plumbing codes. And of course, our business, the main line in our office is 550-8345, and there's always there during the lunchtime hour from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM to answer any calls. Our website is for anybody that's, wants to find out anything about regarding our applications, please.
May I commend, Ivaristo, your department, all the departments. They do an awesome job with a very limited resources, especially manpower. Trying to keep up with 1,000 restaurants in the city with five inspectors or in your, in your department, with the amount of inspectors you have, you do quite a bit. And I know, I know you go way beyond call of duty and you really work hard and we appreciate it.
Any questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. He's always accessible and he's eager to help. Item 16.
It's good to be mayor. I'm next.
How many more?
Ten more, Mayor.
Three more?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The Fire Marshal's Office is located at 1036 East Levy. We basically, primary ordinance is chapter 50, which is a fire prevention, protection code. And it, it's, the edition that we're using currently is a 2006 edition of the International Fire Code, and it also includes appendix A through G of the International Code Councils. We also follow the fireworks code, forgot to mention here. We also oversee that particular part of the ordinance, also in chapter 50. Our geographical responsibility is also the city limits and some ETJ. We currently have five inspectors. They have done 1,844 inspections last year. They also do investigations of building fires and also complaints. That's part of the dual deal they do. One other thing they do is they go out and do public fire education classes. Last year, we had 398 of them. That's with our inspectors and also our firefighters, together working in tandem. And the Fire Marshal's Office is 548-6075. And our email is www.cob.us/fire. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Next.
Thank you, sir.
Next, 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 next.
Next, 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 next.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Basically, we're more or less trying to comply or use our personnel to comply with our programs that we administer. And since we're basically the funders, we basically pay for all demolitions because we get that money from CDBG. So we enforce chapter eighteen, the buildings and building regulations. We have inspected dilapidated structures. We closely work with the fire, police and building official. We have one inspector, one enforcement officer, I guess that's zero, but he's in training. I guess we're an enforcement officer in training. And basically, we, last year, did fifteen, we demolished fifteen units. Not that we inspected fifteen, we did a lot more than that. But we took the, the, the structure all the way to the building standards, all the way to demolition.
Ben, what's last name of the building standards?
Uh, Mr. Gomis.
I've gotten calls from some of the members, they're saying that you all have a meeting they wanna meet.
Mr. Gomis is in charge of that. To me, we basically provide information to him.
I think they're meeting tomorrow, right?
I believe the last meeting we had was about six months ago. Just because we have not had a meeting, that does not mean the program is not active. We do have the inspectors out there, they go and they do visual inspections on those dilapidated structures. We do have created the file. And once we're ready to go before the Building Standard Commission Board, we will do, and then there will be, go before the purchasing department for a contract so that contract can be awarded, so that we can go and start demolishing those structures.
You have several committee members who are wondering whether that meeting is gonna go.
Okay.
Mr. Gomis, and since we're on that note of dilapidated homes, you know, and I know we get this a lot, well, we have to wait or, you know, we don't have enough monies right now, or, you know, CDBG has the money so we can tear down these homes. And we have ten homes or five homes that are ready to get taken down now. And there should be no question of whether, well, we can't afford it, we should. We should get the monies, whatever it takes, and tear down those homes. Because we know that it's causing other issues for PD, it's causing the neighbors' issues. And again, the issue shouldn't be, well, do we have the money to do it? Just do it. Find the money, get it, P, make it happen, and tear down those homes.
Okay, continue, Ben.
Sorry.
Basically, Mayor, this is our phone number, five four eight sixty one fifty. And our website is available on that site as well.
Thank you, Ben. Who's next?
Thanks, Ben.
Santana?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Public Works, sixty thirty-five Coffee Board Road.
This should've been a workshop.
Primary ordinance, chapter forty-six. Actually, we aid all these, our departments that have been up here. We help them out on environmental. This is, uh, issues dealing with water, land and air contamination as it affects our, our environment, illegal dumping into our waterways in storm storms. This can include also the filling in the resacas. Our ETJ is within the city of Brownsville and the surrounding areas. We have one environmental coordinator. And our number's eight three eight six two five three, and we can be reached at our website. The COB US Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Santana. Okay, Peter Goodman?
Peter Goodman, Heritage Department. We're a little different than some of the other departments in that we only have, according to ordinance, there are only two ordinances that we can enforce. One is demolition by neglect and the other is Article Nine of chapter three forty-eight. I can tell you one thing, happily, we've, well, the other, the other thing that does set us apart is the geographic area. And that according, again, to ordinance, we only have jurisdiction over the O eleven overlay district. And that's the original town site, mostly the downtown business area and residential, West Brownsville, Los Avanos and Buena Vida. Okay, when we say inspections, inspections start anytime we have to go out. And basically, we work on a one-to-one collaboration with, with folks in town. And so we've never actually issued a citation. And we've gotten everything cured by just talking to people. We find it's a marvelous method. And in most instances, it actually works. Especially because when you're dealing with a home or a building, it's not just a, a one-time contact. You have to go back and work with them on various items to get them to comply and to get them to understand. Please understand also that, except for two instances, everything that we issue a permit for, which is called a Class L, is also generated by the Buildings Permitting Department. In other words, if you wanna put on a new roof to your house, you need a roofing permit as well as a Class L if it's in the overlay district or, or a heritage building. So if somebody has not complied, they have not only not complied with us, but they've got a bigger problem because they have not complied, they don't have probably a permit or they have not complied with the permit from building inspections. And so normally, building inspections would be the one that they would have to comply with. And building inspections, I understand, normally would double their fee or something, compensation as, as punishment until they rectify the situation. And so we don't, we don't have, we have asked them one time to issue a citation on the prevention of demolition by neglect where, where constant contact failed. And they issued, they issued the citation and the party came in, met with the judge. Judge gave them thirty days, and within three days, they had cured. And so they, it was just dropped. And that's the only time we've ever had to issue anything.
Peter, can I have a, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there a reason why the boards are still up on your, around your building?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that. I'm so glad you asked that. Because we have the windows.
Because it's modest, I can't get any, I'm sorry.
We, we like to tell people that the reason they're up is because hurricane season. Unfortunately, when, it was just before I came, so it's thirteen years ago that that space was redone. And when they did the windows, they used soft pine and they didn't use treated lumber. And I can tell you what happens to soft pine in Brownsville. I could show it to you, what's left of it. It has mushrooms, it's soft, the glass fell out. We don't have any windows. And so originally, we just left them in to keep the glass there. And the last time that we removed them, the glass actually fell out. And so, actually, those kind of windows are kind of expensive to duplicate. Although they're new windows, they're not historic windows and just, you know, in shape so that they match the rest of the building. Buildings, I'm sorry, Public Works has some very talented carpenters and they've agreed to make us windows. And we now have lumber that is drying now.
How long will that take, Peter?
Because they don't, because termites won't eat treated lumber.
Right. Well, how long would it, how long would it take? Because those boards have been up there, it seems like more than a year now.
Oh, yeah. The lumber should be dry in about a month.
Okay.
And then they're ready. And, and what I, well, I should tell you, I suppose, look at the windows around the rest of the building. And don't look up at the big ones around the stairwell.
Okay.
Don't stand under them.
There's the phone number and the website. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
What about the, the enforcement of our downtown businesses, particularly the ropa usadas, where you can see all the clothing on the floor? And then we had a fire.
That's not, that's not Heritage, that's fire and buildings.
Someone told me that was under here.
Doesn't fall under us.
It doesn't?
No.
That, that, that's, that's a, that's a joint effort of the Fire Marshal and our building official. And that's being done right now after the recent fire. And we already have a list of inspections we've already done. And one of the things we wanna, we want to make clear to them that they, there are, some of them are, they're stores and not a warehouse. So we're going to identify to them the locations where they can warehouse clothing. They're not supposed to store it within their, unless they fit the description of a warehouse, they cannot store it within their property where they have to store. So we got locations where they, they can go to. And we're working on that right now, Commissioner.
Yeah, and the certificates of occupancy, as, as the city manager mentioned, are for retail, not for warehousing. So they're in violation even of their certificate of occupancy.
We're gonna be strong on that, so we don't-
Good.
Is there anybody else?
No.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Item sixteen.
We have to go back to fourteen, but I'd like to table.
You wanna go back to fourteen?
Yes, because we skipped it.
Okay, item fourteen.
Move the table.
Move the table? Okay, motion table out of fourteen. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen, presentation and discussion regarding city of Brownsville Park rules.
I am number sixteen, I'm the final one. Mayor Commissioners, before I start, I'd like to thank everybody for attending or paying part in the tribute at Veterans Day, city management, everybody. We were honored, the veterans and also the families that were there. It was the best attended memorial event that we've had since I've been here nine years. Really appreciate it. Basically-
I didn't mean to interrupt, but your item was fourteen and it was tabled.
On sixteen, I had-
Well, I thought we were doing item sixteen. You're item sixteen.
I'm sixteen.
I'm looking at my agenda on my computer.
I think she means to table this one, but it's maybe-
I got item sixteen right here as presentation discussion regarding city of Brownsville Park rules.
She has a different numbering on her agenda.
Yeah, I do, I have a different numbering.
Well, what do you wanna do, item sixteen?
We already, well, we tabled, motion tabled, we already did.
You wanna table this one, too?
It's just his, it's the same one. My numbering is different on my computer for some reason. Sorry.
That's okay.
My apologies.
Continue. Okay, basically, I put this up here, it's gonna be hard to read this page because this isn't intended for the presentation.
Hey, table it.
This is the table.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Fourteen sixteen is tabled. Fourteen sixteen is tabled.
Thank you, Chris.
We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Why do I have a different?
We all do, it's all different, it's all-
So you're the only one that has a different?
I don't know.